If we could, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Maloney, Mr. Myers, Dr. Stevens, Mr. Stenit, Mr. Beard, Mr. Blevins, Mr. Blues, Ms. Crosby, Mr. DeCamp, Mr. Ellinger, Ms. Gordon, here, Mr. Gray, Ms. James, Mr. Lane, and Mr. McCord.
Here.
Thank you very much. It appears we have a quorum, so I'd now like to call on Associate Pastor Jay Silence from the Beaumont Presbyterian Church to give our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Gracious, merciful, and mighty God, we gather with many different agendas, many different ideas, but we gather nonetheless and are unified in thanksgiving for the rain that was delivered this day, for the refreshment granted to the land and the people on the land. We pray that similar refreshment might be offered by this council as they seek to agree, as they seek your wisdom in their proceedings this evening, throughout their terms. Gracious God, watch over all of us. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Silence. I understand that the presentation with the southeast Lexington baseball team has been postponed until October 4th. The docket, I think, reflects the 11th, but that will be on the 4th. That brings us now to the ordinances for second reading. Councilmember Beard.
I would like to move to amend item number four. The portion of that, the last portion of that reading and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-six to be deleted. They have found other sources of funds, so they've requested that that be done.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Does everyone understand the motion? It's understanding the motion is to amend the docket by deleting that portion of item four, which states end appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-six. Any discussion? Those in favor of amending the document, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Appears as though the motion carries. That being the case, Madam Clerk, if you'll give a second reading to the ordinances.
An ordinance changes the zone. Number one, an ordinance changes the zone from an agricultural urban AU zone to a highway service business B3 zone for 1.405 net, 1.469 gross acres of property located at 2509 2497 Georgetown Road, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, Dennis R. Anderson. Number two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Gray Construction in the amount of $100 for use at the Safety City Program and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-five. Number three, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of clerical assistant grade 104N and creating one position of mailroom clerk grade 108N and reclassifying the incumbent in the Department of General Services to become effective retroactive to July 9, 2007 and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-eight. Number four, as amended, an ordinance amending section twenty-two five of the Code of Ordinances creating one temporary position of staff assistant senior grade 108N in the Department of Environmental Quality. Number five, an ordinance amending section twenty-two five of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of security officer grade 106N and amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances creating one position of security officer grade 106N in the Department of General Services and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-seven. Number six, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number forty-four. Number seven, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances creating one position of deputy director grade 120E in the Division of Internal Audit to become effective January 7, 2008. Number eight, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances transferring one position of resource analyst grade 115E and its incumbent and one position of administrative specialist grade 110N and its incumbent from the Division of Human Resources to the Division of Accounting and changing the position title and the title of the incumbent from Human Resources Analyst to Payroll Analyst in the Division of Accounting and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number forty-nine. Number nine, an ordinance authorizing on behalf of the mayor, authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Environmental and Public Protection Cabinet to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $144,556 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for continuation of the litter control program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-three and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number ten, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Justice Cabinet to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $55,000 federal funds under the Violence Against Women Act program are for continuation of the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner program, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $26,340 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-four and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eleven, an ordinance ratifying and adopting the 2006 Division of Community Corrections Policy and Procedural Manual ratified and adopted by ordinance number two seventy-six dash two thousand and six, which provides procedures for general management, public information, inmate information system and inmate records, budgeting and accounting, inmate accounts, commissary staffing, disciplinary actions, sworn status, appearance, code of ethics, court proceedings, personnel records, physical fitness, training requirements, off-duty employment, drug-free workplace policy, employee assistance program, tobacco-free, no-smoking designation, admissions, commitment, authority, inmate records, inmate searches, inmate property orientation, transfer, and release, objective classification, security assessment, custody assessments, disciplinary segregation, administration segregation, inmate supervision, security procedures, inspections, searches, transportation of inmates, uses of, use of restraints, use of force, weapons, use of firearms, emergency procedures, and operation inmate health care, food service procedures, equipment maintenance, control and use of dangerous materials, sanitation, hygiene, inmate services unit statement of inmate rights, disciplinary offenses, hearing procedures, inmate grievance procedures, probation services unit, community alternative program goals, drug testing unit, and community service unit as the 2007 Policy and Procedure Manual. And number twelve, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirement for its foreign municipal expenditures related to supplemental agreement number one with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways and Appropriating and Reappropriating Funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-five.
Thank you very much. You've heard the ordinances that have received second reading. The floor is open for a motion to approve them.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll and if all the members will vote electronically.
Mr. Myers?
Present.
Mr. Stenit?
Present.
Mr. Beard?
Present. No, I'm present. I'm also aye.
That's good. I'm glad. Thank you. Now we got that clear. Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Let's see. Now you're here. Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
I'll recuse on number two and yes on the rest.
All right. I'll make that note. And Ms. James?
Yes, Ms.
And Mr. Lane?
Ma'am.
And Mr. McCord.
Did Mr. McCord step out?
Mr. McCord.
Oh, Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you please place your vote on the machine? Thank you.
Those ordinances are adopted. We're now down to the ordinances for first reading. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number thirteen, an ordinance accepting the bid of BCD Incorporated in the amount of $776,700 for the Gainesway Park Community Building and Appropriating Funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-nine. Number fourteen, an ordinance accepting the bid of Central Rock Mineral Company LLC in the amount of $1,861,910.79 for the Star Shoot Parkway Extension and appropriating the funds pursuant to schedule number sixty-three. Number fifteen, an ordinance amending section thirteen dash forty-four two of the Code of Ordinances to specify a tax rate of five percent on all insurance companies based upon the premiums of policies other than life insurance. Number sixteen, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of staff assistant senior grade 108N, creating one position of administrative specialist grade 110N, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Community Corrections to become retroactive, effective retroactive to July 9, 2007 and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-six. Ordinance number seventeen, an ordinance amending section twenty-one five of the Code of Ordinances abolishing forty vacant positions within various divisions and amending section twenty-two five of the Code of Ordinances abolishing twenty-five vacant positions in various divisions to become effective retroactive to June 25, 2007 and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-seven. Number eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $220,713.50. Federal funds are for continuation of the Metropolitan Medical Response Systems, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number fifty-eight and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nineteen, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number sixty. Ordinance number twenty, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a donation of $1,000 from McDonald's for refurbishment of the Safety City Facility and appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number sixty-two. Number twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women, which grant funds are in the amount of $200,000 federal funds are for continuation of Safe Havens Project, the Sunflower Kids Visitation Center, a part-time position of the Office of the Friend of the Court, and partial funding of the Director of the Fayette County Violence Prevention Board, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number sixty-one and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number twenty-two, an ordinance amending section one of ordinance number three fifty-seven, two thousand and six, correcting a typographical error in the pay grade of victims adequate grade 112 in the Division of Police. And number twenty-three, an ordinance amending section three of ordinance number one eighty-six, two thousand and seven, correcting a typographical error in the class code for risk management analyst.
Thank you very much. That concludes the ordinances receiving first reading. We're ready to proceed to resolutions requiring second reading. Councilmember Blues, I understand you have a motion in this regard.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that item number one on the docket under second reading resolutions regarding the lease of Sprint.com for a cell tower at Coldstream Park be removed. So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, just please vote aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. And Madam Clerk, if you will proceed to second reading.
Resolution number two, a resolution accepting the bid of SBR Machinery Movers LLC in the amount of $29,500 for the facility structural upgrade. Resolution number three, a resolution accepting the bid of KBS Kempco Building Supply Establishing a Price Contract for Lumber and Plywood. Number four, a resolution accepting the bid of Guarantee Pest Control Incorporated Establishing a Price Contract for Pest Control Services. Number five, a resolution accepting the bids of Blackhawk Enterprises and Pathmaster Inc. Establishing Price Contracts for Video Surveillance Equipment for the Division of Revenue. Resolution number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Home Depot and Kentucky Utilities of Building Materials for use at the storage buildings at the police firearms training facility 4300 Airport Road at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the March of Diamonds and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $23,500 and are for the support of a project that will assess and pre-perinatal and postpartum mood disorders to be conducted in conjunction with the Home Networks Hands Program at Family Care Center. Number eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a support services agreement with North Grooman Commercial Information Systems Incorporated for the provision of maintenance support to the Memorex Telix Tape Backup System at a cost not to exceed $6,999.96. Resolution number nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government, authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a mental health services agreement with Bluegrass Regional Mental Health Mental Retiration Board Incorporated for court-ordered mental health evaluations of clients referred to the Division of Youth Services at a cost not to exceed $3,000. Number ten, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an affiliation agreement with Baptist Healthcare Incorporated Doing Business as Central Baptist Hospital for practical experience training for paramedic students at no cost to the Urban County Government. Resolution number eleven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church Incorporated, $500, and Bryan Station Band Association Incorporated, $350 for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Resolution number twelve, a resolution authorizing the Department of Law to institute a condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain temporary construction easements and permanent sanitary sewer easements for the property located at 537 Wilderness Road for the Wilderness Road Woodward Lane Sanitary Sewer Project. Resolution number thirteen, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend Partial Urban Service District, number three, to provide garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for the service in the area included, finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide this service in this area, which area is defined as certain properties on the following streets: Mill Creek, Appian Crossing Way, Jones Trail, and Longleaf Place subdivision, Longleaf Place. Resolution number fourteen, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend Partial Urban Services District, number five, to provide street lighting and garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for these services in the area included, finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which area is defined as certain properties on the following streets: South Mill Commons, section three, Lawrence Street, Craven's Property, the Lofts at 991, McLaughlin Lane, Todd's Road, and Beaumont Center, Veranda Place. Resolution number fifteen, a resolution specifying the intention of the Urban County Council to expand and extend the Full Urban Services District to provide street lighting, street cleaning, and garbage and refuse collection, finding a need for these services in the area included, and finding the ability of the Urban County Government to provide these services in this area, which area is defined as certain properties on the following streets: Angela Court, Black Horse Lane, Brocktown Road, Bradley Lane, Leestown Road, Rebecca Drive, Richardson Property, Unit Eight, Section One, Stewart Hall Boulevard, Steel Meadows LLC, Property, Section One, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Andover Creek Lane, Arnold Properties LLC, Appian Crossing Way, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1B, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1E, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1G, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1I, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1J, Bay Springs Park, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Center Circle, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beaumont Center Circle, Blackford Parkway, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1B, Blackford Parkway, New Market, Unit 4B, Brick House Lane, The Reservation in Tate's Creek, 5301 Tate's Creek Road, Bridlewood Lane, Longleaf subdivision, Unit Two, Broadleaf Lanes, Burgess Avenue, Sebastian Property, Unit 3C, Section Two, Burnt Mill Road, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, Section Two, Burnt Mill Road, Sebastian Property, Unit 3E, Section Two, Burnt Mill Road, Ramsey Sullivan Creek, Path Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1A, Section One, Kearney Ridge, Creek, Path Lane, Masterson Stations Central, Citation Village, Darrenia Lane, Asbury, Dawson Springs Way, Newtown Springs, Unit 2B, Dawson Springs Way, Carroll Raleigh B. Senior, Eastway Drive, Masterson Stations Central, Citation Village, Ferndale Pass, Blackford Property, Unit Phase Three, Unit 1G, Hiberna Pass, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1H, Hibernia Pass, Steel Meadows LLC, Property, Section One, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Horse Mint Trails, Scully Property, Heaven Up Lane, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1C, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1D, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 3, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1A, Section One, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3B, Section One, Kelly Rose Way, Woodward Land Property, Unit 1A, Laguna Court, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1C, Lander Court, Highland Lakes, Unit 1H, Largo Lane, Scully Property, Lawson Lane, Masterson Stations Central, Citation Village, Leestown Road, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3A, Loblawy Court, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3G, Section One, Loblawy Way, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1C, Kearney Ridge, Locust Blossom CV, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1E, Matham Trail, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1F, Matheran Trail, Blackford Property, Phase Three, Unit 1H, Matheran Trail, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1D, Kearney Ridge, Meadow Street, Meadow Suite Lane, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 3, Meadow Suite Lane, Johnson Property, Unit 1J, Millbank Road, Millbank Road, Johnson Property, Unit 1B, Section Two, Millbank Road, Steel Meadows LLC, Property, Section One, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Mist Flower Lane, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Monarch Street, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1D, Movado Court, Newtown Springs, Unit 1, Section One, Newtown Center Way, Asbury, Newtown Springs Drive, Newtown Springs, Unit 1, Section One, Newtown Springs Drive, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, Section Two, Old Woolen Mill Lane, Sebastian Property, Unit 3A, Section Two, Old Woolen Mill Lane, Denton Farms Incorporated, Unit 3, Section A, Ellersley at Delong, Ormsby Place, Carroll Raleigh B. Senior, Pasadena Drive, Denton Farms Incorporated, Unit 3, Section A, Ellersley at Delong, Richmond Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1G, Ryan Road, Masterson Stations Central, Citation Village, Robinson Way, Russell Cave Road, Johnson Property, Unit 1B, Section Two, Russell Cave Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1A, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1B, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1C, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1D, Sandersville Road, Unit Newtown Springs, Unit 2B, Saunders Spring Way, Asbury Saunders Spring Way, Masterson Stations Central, Citation Village, Hell Court, Newtown Springs, Unit 2B, Silver Springs Drive, Asbury Silver Springs Drive, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3G, Section One, Silver Bell Trace, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Sullivan's Trace, Ramsey Sullivan, Property Unit 1A, Section One, Kearney Ridge, Sullivan's Trace, Ramsey Sullivan, Sullivan's Trace, Pasadena Point, Subdivision, Sunseeker Court, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3A, Sweet Spire Drive, The Reserve, and Tate's Creek, 5301, Tate's Creek Road, Tate's Creek Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1E, Tyburn Court, Tyburn Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1F, Tyburn Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1G, Tyburn Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1H, Tyburn Way, Sebastian Property, Unit 3D, Trailwood Lane, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, Section Two, Trailwood Lane, The Reserve, and Tate's Creek, 5301, Tate's Creek Road, Tykes Pass, Sebastian Property, Unit 3A, Section Two, White Oak Trace, Sebastian Property, Unit 3C, Section Two, White Oak Trace, and Sebastian Property, Unit 3D, White Oak Trace, White Berry Drive. Woo-hoo. Number sixteen, a resolution approving the issuance of, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Council approving the issuance of tax-exempt industrial revenue bonds by the City of Stampin' Ground, Kentucky to finance an industrial building project of Central Christian Church with Fayette County. And there's a public hearing for this?
Madam Clerk?
Resolution number sixteen, there's a public hearing?
Do we need to schedule that?
No, it actually is taking place tonight.
All right. Before?
I just gave it second reading, so you could probably open it right now if you wanted.
Does anyone wish to offer any comment with respect to item sixteen on the agenda? I see none, so we'll close the public hearing on that issue. Thank you very much.
Resolution number seventeen, a resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of excess general liability, excess automobile liability, excess public officials liability, and excess law enforcement liability insurance through the Kentucky League of Cities from Ace Insurance Company for the term of October 1, 2007 to October 1, 2008. It costs not to exceed $615,010 and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the same. A resolution changing the street name and property address numbers of 4,001 Blushing Groom Lane to 655 Orientate Way, 3647, 3685, and 3701 Bryan Station Road to 76870 and 890 Momood Lane, 4168 Paris Pike to 109 Latroy Way, 4168 Paris Pike to 275 Myrmood Lane, 3758 Paris Pike to 625 Myrmood Lane, and 3890 Paris Pike to 290 Orientate Way. Change in the property address numbers of 828 through 832 Malibu Drive to 828 Malibu Drive of 3,500 North Cleveland Road, rear to 3610 North Cleveland Road, 5820 King Post Court to 5826 King Post Court, and 3901 Peter Pan Road to 3,900 Peter Pan Road, and changing the street name of the position of Morrow Alley from its intersection with West Third Street to its southwest terminus to Morrow Place, and 620 Peter Pan Road to 620 Myrmood Lane, all effective 30 days from the date of passage. Resolution number nineteen, a resolution approving and adopting the solid waste management plan for Lexington Fayette County for 2008 through 2012 pursuant to KRS 224.43 through 340. Resolution number twenty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Charles Rice for the property located at 225 Forest Park Road for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $300 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from the Esma Greer for the property located at 215 Floral Park for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $150 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Resolution number twenty-two, a resolution amending resolution number seven dash 2005 to authorize the acceptance of a deed for roadway improvements conveying a fee simple right-of-way and a temporary construction easement from Bill McNeese located at 677 East Loudon Avenue for the Loudon Avenue Improvements Project and to authorize payment in the amount of $250 plus usual and appropriate closing costs effective retroactive to January 13, 2005. Resolution number twenty-three, a resolution amending resolution number 273 dash 2003 previously amended by resolution number 173 dash 2004 and resolution number 366 2007 to change the name of the approved company which was granted an inducement pursuant to the Kentucky Jobs Development Act from Tempur-Pedic Incorporated to Tempur World LLC and to recognize Tempur-Pedic North America Incorporated as the sole approved affiliate for the economic development project effective retroactive to April 2, 2007. Number twenty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a pipeline crossing agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated, CSX Agreement Number CSX 048165 for installing a sanitary sewer force main for the North Elkhorn Diversion wastewater project at a cost not to exceed $8,250. Number twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a pipeline crossing agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated, CSX Agreement with number CSX 048166 for installing a sanitary sewer force main for the North Elkhorn Diversion wastewater project at a cost not to exceed $8,250. Number twenty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a pipeline crossing agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated, CSX Agreement Number CSX 048167 for installing a sanitary sewer force main for the North Elkhorn Diversion wastewater project at a cost not to exceed $8,250. Number twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revanding agreement with Lexington Call Mobile for reconfiguration services related to the Division of Fire and Emergency Services 800 megahertz communication system with an effective date retroactive to March 1, 2007 at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement, execute an agreement with ad success for the Mobility Office marketing campaign at a cost not to exceed $40,400. Number twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase and service agreement with the downtown Lexington Corporation to provide services to strengthen relationships among downtown businesses, residents, and community organizations, and to conduct various activities that emphasize the assets and promote the growth and revitalization of downtown A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a purchase and service agreement with the downtown Lexington Corporation to provide services to strengthen relationships among downtown businesses, residents, and community organizations and to conduct various activities that emphasize the assets and promote the growth and revitalization of downtown Lexington at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Number 30. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an agreement with U.S. Geological Survey for the continuing and ongoing maintenance and operation of existing stream flow and precipitation gauges at a cost not to exceed $86,910. Number 31. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a lease agreement for an initial term of one year and an optional renewal term of one year with MES Enterprises LLC for space in the Triangle Center condominiums located at 325 West Main Street, Unit 3 for the SARS ERP implementation team at a cost not to exceed the sum of $5,750 per month for the initial term and $6,325 per month for the renewal term, subject to the appropriations of sufficient funds. Number 32. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an engineering services agreement with GRW Incorporated for impervious area GIS data creation at a cost not to exceed $195,000. Number 33. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a facility usage agreement contract with Fayette County Public Schools for the ESP and real programs at no cost to the urban county. To the government. Number 34. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute change order number 1 to the contract with Lynn Co. Excavation Company Incorporated for Seventh Street at old railroad crossing improvements, increasing the contract price by the sum of $10,412.32 from $238,718.65 to $249,130.97. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Those are the resolutions that have now received a second reading. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll, and all council members should vote electronically.
Mr. Myers?
Aye.
Mr. Stennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
No on 24 through 26, and yes on the rest. How do I do that electronically?
I have it noted in the quick notes, sir, and I'll make sure that that vote is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
And Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will say yes also.
Oh, I got you. You, I think you said yes, but you didn't punch your button, so I punched it for you.
Well, I did punch, but I think I'm put as absent there.
Oh, is it still you marked you absent? Oh, sorry about that. I'll get that fixed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are adopted. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to first reading on the resolutions.
Okay. A resolution accepting the bid of Gray Bar establishing a price contract for the switchgear maintenance for the Division of Sanitary Sewers. Number 36. A resolution accepting the bid of Kimco Corporation establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Downtown Arts Center. Number 37. A resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment establishing a price contract for fire hose for the Division of Fire. Number 38. A resolution accepting the bid of Business Printing America establishing a price contract for printing newsletters for the Division of Solid Waste. Number 39. A resolution accepting the bid of Dynamic Technologies Incorporated, DBA, Doing Business as Ocean Systems, in the amount of $37,994 for a forensic audio analysis, video analysis system for the Division of Police. Number 40. A resolution accepting the bid of Woodall Construction in the amount of $785,158 for the South End Park redevelopment temporary housing project. Number 41. A resolution accepting the bid of Tom Chestnut Excavation and Construction Incorporated, LLC, in the amount of $16,200 for the Cross Keys Park Low Water Crossing. Number 42. A resolution accepting the bid of CAB and Associates Incorporated establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Fire Department 911 Call Center. Number 43. A resolution accepting the bid of Coverall Commercial Cleaning establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Youth Services. Number 44. A resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Service establishing a price contract for custodial services for the County Extension Office. Number 45. A resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Service establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Phoenix Building. 46. A resolution accepting the bid of KAG Management Group establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Senior Citizens Center. Number 47. A resolution accepting the bid of TMAC Properties establishing a price contract for custodial services for police headquarters. 48. A resolution accepting the bid of LNN Commercial Cleaning establishing a price contract for custodial services for Police Row Call at McGudwin Drive. 49. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to accept the donation of Lexmark 3500 through 4500 series printer from Lexmark International Incorporated for the Urban County Council Office at no cost to the urban county government. Number 50. A resolution authorizing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code Of Order in Section 18-86 to install multiway stop controls at Bryanale Drive and North Side Drive. Number 51. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from John and Janet Bricker for property located at 2405 Old Bridge Lane for the South Elcorn Force Main Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,975 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 52. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at 541 through 543 Goodlow Street from Thomas W. Coffey Jr., Jamie and David Richardson, James Coffey and Charles Coffey, Thomas Wendell Coffey, Mark and Edith Givens, James Seawright Jr., Felicia and Enrico Robinson, Candy Givens, Mary Thomason, Doris Seawright, and Joan T. Brown for the Ann Street Acquisition Project and authorizing payment in the amount of $6,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 53. A resolution accepting the pricing of Phoenix Disaster Service LLC in the amount of $79,850.30 for acquisition of medical disaster management software for the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management Services. Number 54. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement and any other necessary closing documents with Eastland Out LLC for the purchase of the properties located at 1268 and 1276 Eastland Drive at a cost not to exceed $600,000. Number 55. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement providing for maintenance by the urban county government for roads paralleling and intersecting U.S. Route 68 constructed by the cabinet during its recent improvement project and providing for future transfer of the right of way to the urban county government. Number 56. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an agreement with Friends of McConnell Springs Incorporated. $1,025 for the office of the urban county council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. 57. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute agreements with Kentucky American Water Company for collection of sewer user fees and land failure user fees at a cost not to exceed $996,000. Excuse me. Number 58. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a hold harmless agreement with Lincoln General Insurance Company for settlement of claims under performance bonds for the Wolf Run Project and the Garden Side Sewer Project at a cost not to exceed $119,576.25, the amount of funds which remain due on these projects. 59. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a master license agreement with Connectivity Systems Incorporated for TCP IP software at a cost not to exceed $5,510.
Madam Clerk, if I could interrupt for just a moment. Councilmember Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that item number 60 on the first reading of resolutions be amended to also provide for termination of the agreement executed pursuant to resolution number 359-2007.
Do we hear a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is everyone ready to vote? Then those in favor of that amendment, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Thank you. It appears as though the motion carries.
Number 60, as amended. A resolution rescinding resolution number 359, 2007, which had authorized the mayor on behalf of the urban county government to execute an agreement with Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways for installation of fiber optic cable and conduit along portions of Newtown Pike and Ironworks Pike, and provided for reimbursement of this cabinet by the urban county government in an amount estimated to be $342,234.25, and terminating the agreement executed pursuant to said resolution. And number 61. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a contract with Progrin Limited Partnership, I, to supply influenza vaccine and administer vaccinations to Lexington County government employees at a cost of $22 per employee not to exceed $36,400.
Madam Clerk, I think we have a motion with regard to the next item. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's a typo that need to correct a title. I move to amend item number 62 on the document on the first reading resolutions to correct an error in the title and division of the two permanent sworn appointments from the Division of Police to the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye orally. All right, here we go. We're ready to go. Please vote electronically. Thank you very much. The motion carries.
Resolution number 62, as amended. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Yvonne Brown, Child Care Program Aid, Grade 107N, 12.416 hourly, in the Division of Family Services effective October 15, 2007. Sharon Bradley, Customer Service Specialist, bilingual, Grade 110N, 14.723 hourly, in the Division of Government Communications effective October 1, 2007. Candice Bird, Customer Service Specialist, bilingual, Grade 110N, 13.600 hourly, in the Division of Government Communications effective October 1, 2007. Scott Tyree, Public Service Worker, Senior, Grade 107N, 12.934 hourly, in the Division of Wire and Water and Air Quality effective October 1, 2007. Crystal Monday, Staff Assistant, Senior, Grade 108, 14.156 hourly, in the Division of Simple Purchasing effective October 1, 2007. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointment of Roger Cotton, Public Service Worker, Senior, Grade 107N, in the Division of Parks and Recreation effective October 2, 2007. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Charles Pendleton, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N, 16.261 hourly, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective June 25, 2007. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Chris Ward, Fire Captain, Grade 316N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective June 13, 2007. Mark Samuelson, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective June 13, 2007. Ratifying the unclassified civil service appointment of Sheila Combs, Child Care Program Aid, Grade 107N, 10.347 hourly, in the Division of Youth Services effective October 1, 2007. And number 63. A resolution making a declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement from subsequent borrowings of temporary advances paid for capital expenditures for numerous government projects, including but not limited to acquisition of land for a new fire station, ladder truck, and emergency medical care unit for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, renovation, remodeling, and repair of certain police and fire facilities, the Downtown Arts Center, the Government Center, the Opera House, the Versailles Road campus facility, and the Annex Garage, acquisition and installation of mobile data terminals for the Division of Police, and portable computers for the Division of Building Inspection and Code Enforcement, acquisition and installation of a variety of technical equipment, including modems and mounts, personal computers, servers, and related software for several divisions. Acquisition and construction of various shared use trails, construction of assault barn, acquisition and installation of fiber optic cable, acquisition and installation of a wayfinding sign system, acquisition and installation of signal lamps, and traffic signal upgrades by the Division of Traffic Engineering, various infill and redevelopment capital improvement projects, architectural design services for Senior Citizens Center, various stormwater and other engineering projects, funding for the purchase of development rights program, government wide fleet replacement, and acquisition of miscellaneous government equipment, all as described in the attached exhibit in approximate aggregate amount of $31,618,520. Number 64. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a site specific agreement with the Jusman South Elcorn Water District and Ashtree Properties LLC to provide sanitary sewer service to the Ashtree Subdivision, Unit 2, Development in Jusman County at no cost to the urban county government. Number 65. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an agreement with Software Development Incorporated for billing services for emergency medical services at a cost not to exceed $145,347.60. A resolution, number 66. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Madison County Emergency Management Agency at all to participate in the Joint Information Center in Madison County, Kentucky, as part of the chemical stockpile emergency preparedness program at no cost to the urban county government. Number 67. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an agreement with the Versailles Road Bennett Porter Place Neighbor Association Incorporated, $500, and Lafayette Band Association, $700, for the office of the urban county council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. 68. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a second amendment to health services agreement with Correctional Medical Services Incorporated for meeting the increased needs for medical services for inmates at the detention center at an additional cost not to exceed $253,023. And number 69. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a fifth amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for extension of the completion date for the Newtown Pike Small Area Plan Project to June 30, 2008, at no cost to the urban county government.
Thank you very much. If there are no motions, Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to suspend the rules in order to do a second reading of number 40.
Are there other items? Councilmember Stennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give a second reading to number 54 so that we can process this transaction a little faster to give payment to the landowner. And then Councilmember Maloney has asked me to recommend number 64 for second reading as well, so they can continue with the sewer service to this area. Thank you, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to give second reading to items 40, 54, and 64. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules for numbers 67 and 69, please.
Any further additions to our list? We have a motion then to suspend the rules to grant second reading to items 40, 54, 64, 67, and 69. If there's no further discussion, those in favor, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you'll give second reading to those items.
I'll be glad to. Or does a resolution number 40. A resolution accepting the bid of Woodall Construction in the amount of $785,158 for the South End Park redevelopment temporary housing project. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a purchase agreement and any other necessary closing documents with Eastland Out LLC for the purchase of the properties located at 1268 and 1276 Eastland Drive at a cost not to exceed $600,000. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a site specific agreement with the Jusman South Elcorn Water District and Ashtree Properties LLC to provide sanitary sewer service to the Ashtree Subdivision, Unit 2, Development in Jusman County at no cost to the urban county government. Number 67. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute an agreement with Versailles Road Bennett Porter Place Neighbor Association Incorporated, $500, and Lafayette Band Association, $700 for the office of the urban county council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. And 69. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the county government to execute a fifth amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. Cabinet for extension of the completion date for the Newtown Pike Small Area Plan Project to June thirtieth, two thousand eight, at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The floor is open for motion to approve those items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those items. If there's no further discussion, Clerk, if you will call the roll, and council members,
Okay, Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit? Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp? Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are adopted. That brings us down to communications from the mayor on motion to approve. Thank you very much. Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Those in favor then of approving the communications from the mayor, please indicate by voting aye electronically, and those opposed, vote nay electronically.
Okay, I was trying to make sure I got the first and second on that motion.
I have it's first.
Okay. And Mr. Blevins, second? All right, thank you. All right. Bear with me just one second. All right, now we got it, Ellen. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. The motion carries. There are a number of communication items there for information only. That brings us down now to announcements. Chief, I understand you have a couple of matters to bring to our attention.
Yes, Mayor. Division of Fire has two disciplinary matters we'd like to bring before you. The first is Paul Abercrombie has been charged with misconduct in violation of KRS ninety-five-point-four-fifty and Chapter seventeen of the Uniform Disciplinary Code. We are recommending a forty-eight-hour suspension without pay. He has agreed to this in writing, and we request your approval.
Move approval.
Sir.
Any discussion? Those in favors, please vote aye electronically as soon as we have the machine cleared. Thank you. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion carries. Chief?
Okay. The second one, David McIntosh, has also been charged with misconduct in violation of KRS ninety-five-four-fifty and Chapter seventeen of the Uniform Disciplinary Code. We are recommending twenty-four-hour suspension without pay. He too has agreed in writing, and we request approval.
Move approval.
Sir.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion carries. Chief?
Okay. The second one, David McIntosh, has also been charged with misconduct in violation of KRS ninety-five-four-fifty and Chapter seventeen of the Uniform Disciplinary Code. We are recommending twenty-four-hour suspension without pay. He too has agreed in writing, and we request approval.
Move approval.
Sir.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically.
Okay, who seconded that? Okay, can you please? Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief. Any further announcements? Then that brings us down to public comment. Does anyone wish to comment? Mr. McCarthy, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes.
Your Honor and members of the council, I would like to say that it strikes me that the current ordinances requiring adjoining property owners to maintain the sidewalks and remove any trees between the curb and the sidewalk that die are rather fundamentally unjust since the sidewalk and the utility strip between the curb and the sidewalk are both actually owned by the city. It seems to me it would be more equitable to have the government maintain those. And then, since I saw an editorial in the paper a few days back in which yet another individual was claiming that we should give up on building roads because if we build them, people will just drive more and clog them up all over again, I want to say that theory makes about as little sense as something called the philosophy of the absurd, in which they contend that it's a total waste to eat because you'll just get hungry again in another eight hours or so. I think we need to build the roads to accommodate our expanding population. It makes no more sense to refuse to accommodate the traffic than it would make to refuse to fix the sewers or refuse to expand the school system to accommodate an increasing number of kids. Don't think couples would stop having children if we let the school system rot, and I don't think people are going to give up their cars because you refuse to accommodate them either.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All right. Those in favor, please vote aye. Those no, the motion carries.